All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your patience. We'll get started with tonight's study session. Superintendent Narducci?
Thank you, Vice President Serrano. Albert Einstein had a wonderful quote attributed to him and it said insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. It sounds like Einstein worked on a few organizational strategic plans in his day. Vice President Serrano and governing board members, in the study session, we bring to you a culmination of over two years of work toward the transition of our strategic plan. As our governing board, past and present, has been involved in this process, I'd like to take one slide of the presentation to give a summary of COSD's journey and their pathway to the journey to excellence. You have a one pager in front of you besides the PowerPoint that's online here to assist, follow the presentation. So Stephanie Ingersoll and our team put together this one sheet for you to follow so that it would be a summary of some of the PowerPoint slides you're going to see today. Journey 2025 was born out of the governing board's desire to create goals and metrics as measurable outcomes. Journey 2020 goals were adopted in August of 2010. A key during this process was to make the 10-year strategic plan a part of the culture of COSD and directly supported by COSD's vision, mission, and core values, as we compared our outcomes not only to the state but also with some of the best districts across the nation. Our governing board achievement metrics were refined in 2012 when Rubrik scoring was added to the metrics. Journey 2020 was then updated in June of 2016 where it was known as Journey 2025. Moving over from that left-side logo over to future-ready schools, on May 6th of 2021, I along with our team discussed at the annual board retreat that year that we needed to start to work on a new strategic plan to replace Journey 2025. Even though 2025 was far off, we knew that we needed to start early. At that time, we discussed the future of strategic planning and assessing what we wanted to achieve as outcomes for student learning, but to do that, we needed to assess our status as a district and as an organization. We utilized the future-ready schools framework to provide data in critical areas of our organization to ensure we were preparing our students for the 21st century skills. These key assessments were done in the following areas, and some of the board members or the public may even remember, we called them gears. So these gears, as they were referred to in future-ready schools process, aligned the gears that to operate a systemic change, these gears had to rotate as a system, not independently, and meant that the synergy was at the core of that. So the areas these gears focused on were curriculum instruction, use of space and time, robust infrastructure, data, privacy and security, community partnerships, personalized professional learning, budget and resources. We spent 10 months with various stakeholder groups, both inside and outside organization, and vetted literally thousands of inputs to align what was working as well as areas we needed to enhance to support to meet the needs of our students in the 21st century. When we took this information and looked at it synergistically as to how the system organization supported success for all students at the center of our strategic plan, these elements were captured by doing an overlay of our Journey 2025 strategic plan, which had eight areas of focus, and it was the most current plan at the time. And the information we gathered through future-ready framework, as you can see in the diagram at the bottom left, at the core that ties us all together is the success of all students with critical supporting elements included in the little honeycomb shapes around it. Since you can't see it that far here, and I don't know if you have it up on your computers, those areas of focus around student success focused on an empowered staff, prepared students, whole child supports, engaged partners, welcoming culture and climate, and transformational leaders. That was what we derived from overlaying the future-ready schools elements over the existing Journey 2025. So it was through this arduous and really vulnerable process that we're able to embark on crafting our new strategic journey, journey to excellence, which you can see in the far-right corner in words. We don't have a logo yet until you approve it, then we'll go look for a logo. A plan that values the past and innovates for the future. The plan is fluid and not static, meaning collectively, we can add inputs along the journey. I liken this to providing students with a tiered supportive interventions. For an intervention to be successful in work, you must apply it at the point of discovery and not wait until the end of the year, or five years later, or 10 years later. A plan that is fluid may see strategies change at the point of discovery, and if they're not working or need adjusting, you do it at that time. In addition, we are in a rapidly changing society, be it business, industry, and technology, et cetera. As educational institutions, we must be more fluid and adaptable to change to better prepare our students for their futures. We embarked on a process that leveraged the strengths of our team, fostered ownership of the plan through intensive feedback and inclusive feedback, and identified a clear path and vision for our community of learners through priority goals and objectives. For any of you that read Brene Brown, we're often reminded through her writings that organizations or individuals who set too many priorities have no priorities at all. With that in mind, we created common language around four goals, which you're going to see in our study session tonight. The first goal, COSD learning experiences. The second goal, COSD community engagements. The third goal, COSD as an innovative organization. And the fourth goal, the culture of COSD. To tell you a bit more about our process and a key collaborator with our partner agency and strategic planning, I'll turn the presentation over to our team. Abby Druck has been a key collaborator and is our Director of Professional Pathways. Abby, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. We are really excited to be at this point in the journey where we're getting to share these details with you. As Mr. Narducci mentioned, it's been about a two-year process, so we wanted to start tonight by sharing with you a little overview of that process. If you have your slides for reference, the writing may be a little small in the presentation up here, so I'm going to highlight some things that have happened. In October of 2022, we started this planning, and a key piece of that was identifying a third-party partner, who we decided on was Advanced Learning Partnerships. You'll see it shortened to ALP on your presentation, but they are a vendor that we partnered with in hopes to fulfill this goal of developing a new strategic plan with integrity and getting some feedback from an outside partner to keep us on track. We started heavily working in the spring of 2023 to really narrow down those goals, and once that was done, you may remember us sharing those on a governing board session with you, and also enlisting our administrators that spring to help us get feedback on those overarching goals. The first step were those broad goals, and we've done a lot of work to drill down from there into objectives and strategies. But I would say one thing that our team is extremely proud of is the amount of opportunities we've been able to provide, various staff groups, community members, students, and giving some input back on those goals, because we know to be successful in our next strategic plan, that we do need everybody on board to support us. Moving into fall of 2023, again, we started getting to drill down from those overarching goals. We kicked off the year by introducing them to all of our staff at our annual rally, and then continued to refine those by rolling them out in front of departments and staff to get their feedback, and also to have an opportunity to share with them what their role is, and making sure that they could connect to all four goals. So, you know, while I might be someone who works in support services, I still have a role in the learning pieces of the goals, because everybody plays a role in getting our learning environments, our instruction going in classrooms. So those sessions were definitely a great opportunity, not only to share and get feedback, but to really develop some camaraderie among our stakeholders so that everybody could understand where they fit. Then we started to drill down and get a little bit more focused in those feedback sessions, so we had an opportunity to break into feedback for just goal one at the site. We chose school sites for that because the teaching and learning goal really lives in our schools when it's finalized. And then moving into just editing strategies with our leadership team so that we could prep for next steps. After goal one was totally finalized, we moved into the spring semester. We kicked off the spring semester with some feedback sessions for goals two, three, and four. As we share those today, you'll see that goal one has several objectives, while goals two, three, and four have a few less, so that was why we were able to condense and do two, three, and four together. After those feedback sessions were held, we again went back to the drawing board, did some updating, took their feedback, and refined wording. And then moving into February, we finalized it with that feedback, and now here we are at our big goal for this year, sharing the finalized products with you, and again, getting your feedback. So with that process overview completed, we'd like to take some time to dig into each of the four goals tonight, so we're going to start with Dr. Edgar reviewing goal one for you.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to say, learning experience has had a lot of focus on the whole process in which we worked with. Abby's already gone through and shared with you that we've had a lot of different individuals, partners come in, whether that be teachers, support staff, administration, and really look at the learning experience goal. So I would like to read it out loud for you. It is Chandler Unified School District, students and staff engaging meaningful, innovative learning experiences using essential skills and strategies that foster continuous growth, establish pathways to achievement, and develop successful members of local and global communities. So underneath that goal, there are several different pieces that we're going to walk through today, and as Abby stated, it's one of the larger goals, because learning is what we do. So the first objective, the meaningful and innovative learning experiences, are items that I want to pull out. I'm not going to read this to you, but we do want to focus on the research-based instructional strategies. For the past several years, we've worked with John Hattie's meta-analysis, what are our high-yield instructional strategies that we can use to have our instruction in the classroom mold and shape what we do and how students receive their learning experience? So that is something we're going to continue-
Excuse me, Dr. Edgar?
Yes.
Could you move the microphone closer to your mouth, because you're cutting out every time you turn away from the microphone?
Yes, I will be more intentional, thank you. Which, intentional is also something that we are focusing on in learning experiences. We are going to be very intentional with what we do in the classrooms, like we said, starting with our high-yield instructional strategies as a research base, also looking at moving forward in the future, looking at David Lee's work, looking at A.J. Spencer, Peter Liladall, who's doing Building Thinking Classrooms with Mathematics. So we've started that process, but with a strategic plan, it's not done. And as Mr. Narducci said, we mold and we shape, and we're very intentional as we move forward with what we want to do in the classrooms, and we really just take inventory about where we need to go as we have those metrics in place with a new strategic plan. We're also looking at collaborative structures. How can we get our teachers together in a specified way, whether that's professional learning communities? We already have some different fantastic pieces with professional development being very strategic with our professional developments and as well as our release days, but how can we do that better? How can we look at the vertical articulation of the content, looking at assessments, so we can get to that iterative data process, which is also embedded in this learning experience piece, and looking at Portrait of a Learner? How are we also going to look at Portrait of a Learner embedded into the meaningful and innovative learning experiences for our students? Because all those content skills are very important, but so are those soft skills and those attributes of Portrait of a Learner. Objective 1.2, essential skills, that's something that we will always look at in a strategic plan, because essential skills are our standards. So we have the standards that we must teach, that we want to teach, but how can we do that differently as we look forward into the future? How do we engage our students, whether that be with technology tools, whether that be an instructional practice, whether that be a partnership with a business, whether that be different real-world experiences? We're really looking forward to bringing on our K-8 career literacy standards in '25, '26, as we look at those pathway pieces, that pre-K-12, looking at those partnerships, career pathways, real-world learning experiences. How can we continue to engage our students in the classrooms here in Chandler Unified? And our last objective that we're going to review quickly is developing successful community members. And when we say developing successful community members, we're looking at the four Es, our students. How are we going to develop the four Es? And to remind you, it's enrollment, enlistment, employment, and entrepreneurship. I talked a little bit about the career literacy standards that we are going to be implementing in '25, '26. Standards aren't where it stops. How can we really engage our students, create some comprehensive pathways, inform our parents, really make sure that there's knowledge in our community about what those pathways could be before they even start school? The choice is still Chandler. We have those pathways. We want to be better communicators as we move forward, and really, that's part of our new strategic plan as well. And now, we have goal number two, community engagement.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening. So, community engagement, as Mr. Narducci started out, did a great job of bringing in a sub-sample of different populations and making sure that there were stakeholders involving community members and parents. So with goal two, we have two objectives, and then we also have two strategies under goal two for each of the objectives. So, community engagement, Chandler Unified School District families and community partners engage in the shared responsibility of personalizing experiences that contribute to the student's personal, social, emotional, and academic growth. And as we go into the following objectives, it's really looking at pre-K-12, the community partners, the shared responsibilities, and personalized learning. Objective 2.1, fostering family engagement. It's looking with our community and potential and current CSD families. So as we are experiencing decreasing enrollment, we really need to be cognizant of those potential families that are out there and working collaboratively with a focus on the personalized learning, and that feeds in really well to what Dr. Edgar just shared with learning experiences. Families have an awareness and access to resources, so working on making families, current and potential, aware of resources and how to access those to support their students' social, emotional, and academic needs. Continuously receive opportunities and resources provided by COSD and identify pathways, and that's where we look at our workforce development and that pre-K-12 continuum of what pathways are available. And then, a strategy under community engagement, looking at construct communication systems. So one of our strategies is creating and constructing communication systems, and I think Stephanie Ingersoll has done a great job of really finding parent square as a tool, doing a proof-of-concept, getting feedback from the sites, and then rolling that out district-wide, the vignettes. We'll see later tonight the video with the superintendent updates. So what are those communication platforms and communication systems we can use to foster family engagement? Any questions on objective 2.1? Okay, and as I said, there are two objectives, two strategies, all under goal two. Objective 2.2, cultivating reciprocal community connections, and I kind of mentioned this in the first one, it's, we want that reciprocal partnership with our families, potential families, community partners. They have a shared understanding that their engagement prepares students with a meaningful way to society, and that complements our four Es well of how are we looking at that pathway and equipping students with the skills that they need. Community partners are actively and continuously recruited as a resource for personalized student experience. Articulate various ways. So we want our community partners to share what they are getting from, what are they getting as an outcome of the partnership and the relationship? So instead of us being the voice for the partnership, our goal here with this objective is we want our community partners to articulate what the relationship does and how it benefits them and the community as a whole.
Can you give an example of a few typical community partners?
Yes, I mean, we have a lot. So we have Chamber of Commerce, we have the Hope Institute, Lighthouse, ASU, U of A, School Connect Cafe. So I think we've done a good job of creating these partnerships, but really, when we met with our different groups and Metta's Cabinet, we need to get beyond these current partnerships that we have, and how do we expand them? I know Mr. Narducci is really looking at the partnership with our robotics and how do we expand those opportunities for students? So how do we strengthen those opportunities for our students that then impact our students and staff?
Okay, so it sounds like some are education-related and some are social services-related, and I guess the community question is, is how far are we going to go down the social services path?
Going back to goal two of community engagement, we're really looking at personalized experiences that contribute to students' personal, social, emotional, and academic growth. So those are the four areas tied to community engagement under goal two, and then we break it out further under the objectives, and then again, the strategies that fall under the objective for goal two.
A member of ours, I think a really good example too is, you know, we're not sitting idle waiting for this plan to take place, so we've already known the inputs that we've gotten on the goals, but is that whole workforce development piece that we've invested in and working directly with getting Microchip involved in our corridor, with Patrick Brown's work as well as with Lindsay Duran's work directly, with creating opportunities for our kids to be in mentorship apprenticeships. But we really need that engagement from outside saying, what does it need to look like for our kids? Because we could be preparing them for something that doesn't exist out there. And so these partnerships even start with our business alliance advisory that we formed this year to try to get ready for this goal, so that we can actually get this group thinking about, hey, this is what's needed out there, and then we can produce, you know, by meeting systems midway there to make sure that our kids have the opportunity to get into apprenticeships, mentorships, and even, you know, when we're out there talking businesses, it's an old concept, but even just shadowing, you know, an engineer for the day or a leader in that industry kind of was foreign to them. So we're looking at trying to do anything from shadowing all the way to apprenticeships to externships, and that'll grow under this community engagement goal. That's the specific.
Yeah, and I understand the business partnerships and full support of that, but that wasn't my question. My question is about the social services that we engage with students. Are we going to, you know, become a full-on social service organization for kids and families, or is there some limit to that, some cap to that?
I kind of think we already are, but because we have to look at their social and emotional and their academic growth, it all goes hand-in-hand as a whole child. But, you know, we've put in place right now what we think is effective for our mental health piece of our students, but we still know that there's problems out there, and we just never have enough social workers and counselors to handle all of the need. But I wouldn't think that our strategies are already in place. I would think we would just support and enhance our strategies versus, you know, adding more to it.
Okay, well, what I was getting to is that, you know, social welfare is so much to do there, I would agree with you, but are we going to get so entangled in that that we start losing focus on the only thing that we do in the community, which is academic development? That's my concern.
Yes, and the content that we do is really well, but we've heard from our business partners that our traits, learner traits, they want to see critical thinkers, problem-solvings, and just not content mastery. They want to see adaptability, and a lot of that comes from, you know, from the ability to manage self and system and manage your interactions with others, and also to escalate, de-escalate. There's so many things that support those outcomes that our businesses want to see, and to have a future workforce that has students prepared to even think globally, right? And that takes some empathy to be able to understand what's happening in another part of our world, if you're going to be manufacturing things here for that community or that society. So, yeah, I understand what we're saying there, but there's, I think a lot of them go hand-in-hand, and it's one of the things that we do as an educational institution as well, besides just applied learning.
Okay. All right, thank you. Please move on.
Okay, and we talked about the soft skills, so really focusing on the soft skills that we need in goal two, but how they're threaded throughout all of the goals. So to expand on what Mr. Narducci said, really focusing on those soft skills and equipping students with those soft skills, so then when they're in the other goal areas, they're threaded throughout.
Define soft skills.
Soft skills of de-escalation, conflict resolution, emotional regulation, interview skills, those personal, professional skills that aren't explicitly taught. Okay, is that good?
Yes, limited is my intelligence, yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
And then looking at goal two, strategy two, an example is establish, maintain, and grow diverse community partnerships. So as Mr. Narducci said, we do have current partnerships, but we want to not only maintain those current partnerships, but we want to grow and continue to create more diverse partnerships to help support goal two. So that is one strategy example to support objective 2.2 from community engagement. All right, any other questions under community engagement, goal two? All right, goal three, innovative organizations.
Good evening. So goal three is innovative organizations. As you can see, Chandler Unified School District staff illustrate future-focused, adaptable, instructional, and operational practices that are equitable, efficient, fiscally responsible, and data-driven to ensure high-quality educational experiences. So we know we've got approximately 2,500 teachers, and we also have 2,500 support staff classified. So we know the importance of all of our support staff, whether it be support services, transportation, food and nutrition, our custodial staffs, all of our front-office staffs. All of that really contribute to the positive experiences and the learning experiences that our students have. So we wanted to encapsulate that in our strategic plan, which is what this goal is. So if you look at objective 3.1, innovative, safe, and healthy schools, we're looking at students having access to collaborative learning spaces, nutritious food, technology, transportation, and all of it being student-centered and student-focused. So as we've begun down that path with our reimagining, with our rebuild of Galveston, looking at how do we add collaborative spaces to current buildings, how do we, you know, provide those collaborative learning opportunities for our students? We've done that through that process. Stakeholder engagements, community spaces in some of our new builds, really inviting that community in to be part of the process and providing those spaces to them. And then what are best practices? Looking at best practices in technology, food and nutrition, transportation, trying to be the most efficient to provide that educational experience for our students. So really focusing, you'll see in the next two objectives, providing them with some training to empower that staff, and then data-driven, fiscally responsible decisions for all of those areas. Again, maximizing student achievement and instructional practices. So 3.2, empowered staff. So again, we have a lot of professional development surrounding our teachers, but we've got, again, 2,500 staff that aren't teachers. So how do we provide them with the training that they need? How do we develop their skills, give them access to resources to perform, and that professional growth? What are their career pathways? And then again, how do we really look at, you know, what are the training that our grounds crews need to be most effective? What are our training that our bus drivers, I hear about it a lot, they need behavior supports on the buses, and providing our drivers, not only training them how to drive our buses, but how to supervise 50 kids behind them? And how do we de-escalate on buses? And just providing really specific training to all of our staff and the unique jobs that they have? And so that's what 3.2 encapsulates on innovative organizations. And then our third one, 3.3, that's our data-driven allocation and prioritization of resources. So with this strategic plan, you know that we do a lot of capital planning, we're looking to maximize all of the dollars that we do have, and how do we do that in a fiscally responsible way, using data as it applies to these areas? Using our preventative maintenance data, our facility assessments, again, our capital planning, but really identifying the data that all of our staff needs to be efficient and, again, maximize the resources that they do have. So really looking at what are the data that you need, and then with that, how can we be the most fiscally responsible to provide an excellent educational experience for our students? Any questions on goal three? Okay, goal four?
Okay, goal four surrounds culture. It's kind of a nice way to wrap up our plan as it allows us to achieve really goals one through four by supporting culture in all areas. Chandler Unified School District students, staff, families, and community members create inclusive and supportive environments that enhance open collaboration and quality learning. In goal four, we just have one objective- In Goal Four, we just have one objective. So you'll see that Objective Four Point One focuses on those welcoming, inclusive, and restorative learning environments. And as you take a peek, you'll see those words emerge over and over again because our goal is that all of our stakeholder groups feel like their voices are heard, their opinions and ideas are valued in decision-making, and that we're continuing to provide those opportunities to bring people in, whether it be parents, students, staff. And in addition, by bringing all those people in, the ultimate goal would then be to have those welcoming learning environments because they've been supported by everyone involved in CUSD. As you dig into strategies for this goal and objective, you'll see that in hopes of creating and maintaining that environment, we'll be looking at things like professional development. How do we embed some strategies into our classroom, not only with management, but with instruction that make our students feel included? How are we assessing who's in our classrooms and how we better reach them to give them that welcoming environment? We're looking to provide opportunities and spaces for staff to collaborate in decision-making. So what that looks like is when we're rolling out new initiatives, for example, visiting, what does planning time look like for teachers? Not unilaterally making decisions without getting their feedback. So maybe we're establishing some committees or looking at specialty groups that can give feedback from their experiences that can help us to continue to improve those experiences by valuing their voices and what they've been through and what they can see as needing change and how to get there. In hopes to cultivate the culture that engages everyone, we look for things at school sites like, how are our front offices greeting people? We've done some professional development on how to create that welcoming environment. And that goes, you know, not just in classroom for teachers, but we've done a lot with support staff to encourage that too, so that as they're gathering feedback from our stakeholders, they're using an environment, a language, a communication that makes parents and community partners feel engaged and welcome to give feedback. We do a lot of surveying, as you know, to get results back on our environments and to see where we can improve and where we should keep going. Just again, inviting that feedback in. We tried to even mirror that in our strategic plan process by bringing different groups in at various times and then making adjustments based on that feedback. Goal Four is the short and sweet goal. We only have the one objective, so that's it for Goal Four. Any questions?
Can you explain to me what restorative learning is? I've heard of restorative justice and have some idea what that is. But what is restorative learning?
So really just having to do with having the environment that is responsive to our students and making sure that we're maximizing their learning time and opportunities. So if we do run into trouble and we need to support a student who's maybe having a challenge learning or maybe learns in a different way, what can we do in the classroom to get them into their learning as quickly as possible, miss minimal learning time by learning about our students and teaching in a way that reaches each and every type of learner?
So it's more of an intervention kind of strategy? Is that wanting to understand?
Yeah, and I guess you can also replace that with connectivity to learning. So the restorative piece is that our students, no matter what, still remain connected to the schools, to the individuals at the school and to the learning process. Sometimes that will come with discipline as well, you know, so that we have disciplinary measures that may qualify for students to not be on campus. How can we restore that, you know, in a high school, when you're gone for a certain amount of time, it's really hard to bounce back. So how can we connect and restore that student's opportunity so that they are connected to learning at all times and don't have to feel like they're coming back from a bottom? Then, you know, if we can meet them in the middle there, that when they come back, they're able to, to be able to move forward and to be able to be connected and whole, coming back to their learning. You know, just one simply missing a week sometimes out of school can put a student way behind where they can't, they can't catch up. And we don't want our students that find that easy to do. We want them to have a pathway to being connected. So that's the restorative aspect is that pathway.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so to conclude tonight's presentation, we'd like to just give you an overview of, you now know where we've been, where we're at, and so what are our next steps? We do still have some things to finalize. In May, we'll be focusing on finalizing the key performance indicators because obviously what we put into play as important for us to focus on with strategies, we want to make sure that we have some ways to know, are we being successful? So Dr. Fletcher's team has been hard at work with our leadership team and our feedback sessions determining what might be the best KPIs to measure things. In June, we're gonna be taking a look at metrics. So we'll be looking at what are our current metrics and what truly do those measure? And then what adjustments might need to be made down the road so that we continue to measure what we do and make sure that we're doing what we intend to do with the strategies. Finally, in the 2024, 2025 school year, a big piece of the strategic plan project will be developing learning walks. And Dr. Edgar's team is going to be heavily involved with those as a lot of the learning walk pieces will center around instruction and just taking kind of a bird's eye view at our schools of what is happening daily? Are we making progress towards the goals and objectives? And where can we go back and maybe do some more PD with staff to help them reach more toward those objectives that we're struggling with? And how can we celebrate the ones that we're doing well with? So that will be our probably big, big project to finalize the strategic plan next year. Any questions on next steps?
Yeah, well, learning walks, that's kind of a new concept, at least for me. Can you give an example of what a learning walk would be?
Sure. Actually, we've been doing them in different capacities too. So this is going to be an opportunity to kind of standardize things district-wide to get some more standard feedback. But a learning walk, basically, it's an opportunity for us outside of teacher and staff evaluation. So when you think about those observations and going through classrooms, those are then reflected in evaluations. A learning walk is an opportunity to look at a little bit higher level what's going on in a school and get some feedback across the site. What are patterns? What are themes going on that are going well? What are patterns and themes that we need to address? And that will help us drive professional development site by site as well as district-wide. So they're almost like, if you think of like a formative assessment, right? So check-ins for us that let us know how we're doing so we can continue to monitor and adjust instead of waiting until the end of the year to determine if we've hit all those metrics and goals, we have some feedback in between.
Also, if I can, if I can add on to that, Ms. Rohrs, the, when we embarked on this journey, we didn't want to silo things and we all agreed, every department agreed and every leader agreed that we wouldn't act in silos. So everything supports the plan. But we also, the walks will help us know what needs are out there in our schools and what supports they need. It isn't only a one-way feedback for us to say, this is what we think about you, but it's more about where we're putting our investment dollars. Are we getting the outcomes from those dollars? And what's needed in the future so we can, we can actually request from communities what's needed? And then the other part too is with staffing, we have many community educators out there that are in business and there may be walks that show that they're really trying to get something in, but they just don't have the expertise on campus. And maybe we can partner in one of those goals with an agency that can maybe lend a hand in STEM, STEM technology and things of that nature that can come in and be a community educator. So the learning walks will help our team, and that's every director, every assistant director, every super, all members of the superintendency, our coaches will be involved with these walks to have a better understanding of what our students and our teachers are working through with the strategic plan and the feedback loop as well. So the walks are almost like a 360 view with feedback given to the specific, the school site.
Okay, so I get parts of it. Can you just give a theoretical example of, you know, how this would work?
Yes.
Dr. Edgar, would you like to, I know you're doing a lot of work on that?
Yes, absolutely. So, Mr. Rohrs, what I'd like to do is bring it back to where we're at currently. So what we're doing right now is we do walks as part of our evaluation. You might have heard them as instructional rounds. So we'll be starting in early May, working with our coaches from all the teaching and learning departments to create a system, this learning walk component that will be part of a metric. But it will be based in the Marzano framework that we have for evaluations, rigor and relevance, and the high-yield instructional strategies that we've already done research on with Hattie. We're taking those three elements, putting them together to look at our instructional practices. So really what we're trying to do is streamline, streamline some of the different things that we're doing so we're more efficient and we're really being able to measure what we've already put in place to identify how we need to move forward in these learning walks. So I hope that that brings it together for you.
Yeah, well, I guess I'll kind of have to rush. I'm thinking in terms of, you know, we have new math curriculum and we're gonna have to deal with the implementing it and seeing how it works. And it sounds like this is the feedback loop to, you know, here's how best to do it, here's how it works, here's what doesn't, and, you know, we should roll this out, what we learned in one school to all the rest of schools. Is that kind of where this goes?
Well, I think it might be one component of looking at when we implement a curriculum, we look at many different things. We triangulate data, we pull from our research and assessment. We just have a new assessment system and we're rolling it out in junior high as well. So we'll have a K.A. assessment system. So you want to triangulate, have three data points. Learning walks can be a data point, are some of our assessment pieces, teacher observations as well as informal components. So it can inform us moving forward in the instructional strategies component, but the resource that we're looking at is not, it's not about the resource, it's about the instructional strategy, the actual learning walks. But we do those walks or the audits, we like to call those audits if we have a new resource. We do work with our teachers as well as our administrators, giving them professional development so they understand what the parts of the resource are and how to utilize them, which usually takes about three years is really when we get deep into the resource. So we do those frequently all the time with the Instructional Resource Center coaches, which consists of our ELD coaches, curriculum instruction, assessment, and as well as our special education and ed tech coaches. So it's a collaborative effort in teaching and learning to make sure that the resources are being used. So I think we're talking about two different things. The learning walks that we're looking at implementing will assist us in what we do moving forward, what we do well, what can we do better, how do we move forward? But we are continuously looking at the resources that are adopted and how they impact students' instruction.
And Dr. Edgar, if I can just add on to that, our team's already, Kurt, do learning walks. I know Lana and her team and Colleen have gone out and Mr. Dunn as well to see what the needs are of the schools right now. Part of the future ready piece was to see what their needs are at their sites. This would be putting it all together so that we're addressing our goals under the strategic plan versus just siloing it so that everything is seen as a part of the plan and then we implement the plan and we plan the plan. So it's just keeping everything so that it's central to common language and common investments of what's needed out there. So I would say it's probably just informative looping is what it is so that we're, that multiple people are informed of what's best practice. And then also, what I wanted to share as one thing is, you didn't get to see the strategies, but on board members on your sheet, there's strategies under each one. Sometimes there's two strategies, three or four. We don't want to forget that the goals and the objectives in the plan are pathways. They help guide everybody towards our outcome, which is student achievement, right? Student success. But the strategies, we don't want to limit the autonomy of our staff to develop strategies that work for them as well, that get us to the same point. And so on these learning walks, we may see some great strategies that are going that we will add to a, you know, to a back sheet that somebody can say, I'm looking at trying to do this and get this outcome. And they could see these great strategies working, but they won't see it in isolation. So these learning walks could help us share those, those great strategies that are happening under each objective. So.
Okay, so I'm kind of thinking this is a continuous improvement plan? I mean, is that where we're going?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, good, very good. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so if I, if I like try to restate the jargon in regular language, this is the, this is like, we're managing a business and this is the plan that we're using to manage the business, right? All right.
Perfect.
And that's, that's my number one frustration. You know, we have CPA language, we have Lana language, we have education language.
You can't hear.
I'll start over. So we all have our different world that we live in, whether it's CPA, whether it's Lana's educational. And to me, if you really want the community to understand what you're talking about, somehow you gotta dummy it down. You just do. I understand if you're talking with your teachers, they'll get it. But I'm not sure people in this room will and as per people on TV will. Somehow you've just simply gotta simplify it.
And that's why the goals and objectives are pretty much just common language.
That's common language, I just saw?
Yeah.
That's not my common language.
It's using acronyms. It's a little bit harder to follow if you don't do it every day, if you don't do it all the time.
But I do want to acknowledge, learning walks sounds friendly to me. I think it's familiar, certainly on school sites. I know it's familiar and administration is used to that. But I did have just somewhat of a concern. I love the idea and I'm all for standardization, streamlining and picking up information across all our school sites, but in parallel, knowing that some of our school sites do have unique key needs.
Absolutely.
That we are in parallel acknowledging that there is a differentiation. Specifically, an example would be our Title I schools, that they'll have unique needs that we need to also make sure we're following and meeting and collecting data on that our other school sites might not have.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. I think maybe one thing we missed highlighting about the learning walks is, that is kind of the beauty of it. We need some district-level data to drive district-wide in services, right? Because we want to make sure that when we're providing a district-wide in-service, that it really is beneficial to everyone attending. And then at the same time, the tool will allow that individual feedback. So if you think about trying to identify maybe the lowest common denominator, that this has to happen before this has to happen and as you, as you level up and kind of prioritize what your steps are with instruction or with learning, it will allow sites to differentiate for that. So they, they will be able to start with site in-service and site goals and professional development where their needs are identified, but we'll also have some common data across to say, okay, as a district, what's a widespread need to allow us to tailor the professional development to either a specific site's need or something that is coming up district-wide. So I definitely appreciate you mentioning that because I think it's important that we are using the tool in those two ways.
And Dr. Gilbert and Dr. Fletcher's teams did a really nice job in bringing groups in to talk about their data. So this is, the developing of the learning walks will take a good time to do. So there's lots of input that goes in on that, a lot of individuals that'll, that'll talk about what are the key areas, key indicators in the strategies that we want to give support to. And one of the great things, Member Serrano, is that our, our being out on our campuses are to define the supports that they need that might be individualistic to that school and that community too. So that gives a good chance for us to go back and say, well, here's, here's something that school A needs that maybe school B doesn't need. So it helps us equitably look at supports versus equally look at supports.
And also helps us grow together, right? So maybe school A is really good at something that school B is struggling with. So it'll give us an opportunity too to maybe identify some partners and certainly achieve our culture goal again by bringing some various feedback in from different-looking sites so that it's not all one site helping us develop those learning walks, but getting feedback from people in different roles, different settings so that we make sure it's reflective of our greater needs as a district, but able to drill down to those site needs too.
So what's a silo? I don't know what you're talking about.
Isolated, an isolated instance, a silo is, is just an analogy for a group that might just be off on their own and not really connected to the whole group.
And I might not have enunciated, I said site level, I'm sorry. District level and site level specific so that, so that we have data across individual sites and district-wide.
Weren't you using the word silo?
I used the word silo.
Oh, okay.
She used the word site level. My silo was, we don't want to create siloed opportunities because synergistically, everybody has to be connected to moving kids the same, in the same way. And they've got to feel connected to the system that moves it. And then we get a lot further.
Yeah, I was worried it was missiles or storage.
No, no, no.
Corn storage.
Making up another educational word for you to decipher.
I will have to do a common language vocabulary with pictures, with pictures in the future. I know that.
That does conclude our presentation.
Yeah, you actually kind of have to agree with Joel a little bit about, you know, there's a lot of buzzwords that are probably common in the educational community, but, you know, this really is a public meeting. And, you know, trying to stay away from the buzzwords and explain it in common English, because I had asked about some of this stuff too, would really be helpful, you know, so we could make more of an effort in that, in that direction.
And common language is really important in a strategic plan. And believe it or not, just coming up with the words that we shared with you today, which, you know, for example, culture, Chandler Unified School District students, staff, families, and community members create inclusive, which means everybody belongs. Our sped, our sped students are expected to grow just as long as any other student, as well as any other student. So that inclusivity, it may not be the same practices you might see in society, but what it is, is that every student that's in our midst and in our classrooms, in our seats, has the opportunity to be engaged and is fueled through the system to be able to achieve the levels that they want, they want to and need to achieve. But the environments are enhance open collaboration and quality learning. We really worked hard on the words and believe it or not. We really worked hard on the words and believe it or not, it took months and months to get things narrowed down and draft after draft after draft because words do matter. And so we came up with this after about two years of actually crafting and drafting. I sent to all of you, all the board members, an article that came out today from Kathy Fuchek, who's a doctorate, Finding the North Star in Other Guidance and Strategic Plan Design in Education Systems. And in this article, it's about a five-page article, she highlights Chandler Unified School District and another district in Minnesota that did exemplary work in coming up with this piece where we are right now. But I would like to say, it's been such a great effort, just like when Dr. Gilbert talked about our policy process. A lot of people have been engaged in the process of getting the wording where it is right now and where the goals and objectives and even the strategy input. What I want to, for people to understand though, is that this is our pathway, this is our guide. And we'll keep going back in our executive meetings and saying, what part of our strategic plan does what you're talking about or they're talking about support? And does that get our students further? So we really want this to be our guide and we will develop more common language as we go through it. We guarantee that every general administration meeting, we'll be talking about part of the strategic plan, we'll be talking about the new policies. So it's an educational aspect that only will be delivered as well as people know, understand it, and know what our targets are, which is phenomenal student achievement and comparing CUSD programming to the best in the nation. So the board has been always focused on that in the past and we'd like to remain focused on that in the future, so.
What does North Star have anything to do with it?
Okay, this is Serrano for...
You're gonna have to...
I have a question.
You have to talk to Dr. Fuchek.
Yes, Member Mostyn, we can hear you.
Okay, I have, I do have a couple of comments and questions. First off, I know that there has been a tremendous amount of work put into the strategic plan to date. And I truly appreciate the efforts of the team and the individuals who have been involved with this. Mrs. Strick, I do have a question for you. Do you have a rough idea as to maybe like a number of the individuals who have been involved with this, giving feedback that you've presented to? Can you give me a rough idea? Are we talking 50? Are we talking 100, 1,000? You know, about how many people have been involved with this so far?
So not at every point, but at some point, I feel confident saying all 5200 should have had the opportunity to participate in a feedback session either at their school site or department level. So for example, even in HR with our team of a little less than 40, we pulled them and did a feedback session, each site principal did. We've done other smaller group sessions. We probably had about 200 administrators together for two days last May to get the initial feedback on some goals. We've pulled in some of the advisory teams to get feedback. I think Mr. Narducci and I probably had about 50 people for the goals two, three, and four in the morning and then 50 again in the afternoon. So at some point, all 5200 staff members have had an opportunity to view it, touch it, give some feedback. But then again, some specialty groups that were smaller along the line.
Thank you. I think that is absolutely fantastic that you have been able to do this because there has always been the idea that when a strategic plan comes down from the top, it's a strategic plan that is, that the people who are actually having to implement it do not feel connected to. And by getting input from a huge group of people, diverse group of people, this actually becomes a living document. It doesn't become a plan that is stuck up on a shelf and people say, oh, you know, we have a strategic plan, here it is, and that's, never anything is done with it. And so I truly believe that we are on a really good path towards a living document that everyone who works in the district, plus our families and our students and our community partners want to be a part of and want to participate in this. So I really commend you on getting all of that because I think that that is going to be something that is instrumental in the strategic plan's long-term success. I love seeing in the strategic plan that we are truly including the, all different departments such, and that this has been a progression from the Journey 2020, initial Journey 2020 plan that does include all of our support staff, our parents, our students, our staff, pretty much everyone along the line. And I think that I really see a tremendous improvement in what we're doing with the strategic plan over our, over our Journey 2020 and Journey 2025 plans. So thank you very much. I'm looking really forward to seeing some of the KPIs and identification of the metrics and kind of see what we're going to be doing differently with measuring some of the metrics with all this. And so I look forward to your next presentation.
Thank you. Thank you to our awesome governing board for your time and for letting us share with you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Strick. Just the last thing, I would like to thank our team for presenting. Do you have questions? Okay. But also, this is just, it'll be coming back to as information item tonight and then, of course, a couple of weeks for an action item. And then from there, we'll get everything rolling. Everybody's working hard on our communication plans. And so our next meeting at our annual board retreat, which isn't much of a true retreat for you guys, it's more of a working session. Dr. Fletcher and I will be talking about what those KPIs and could look like. KPIs are key performance indicators that we went over here. What they do is they measure specifically, but we don't want to drown people with measurements, right? We want to make sure that those are limited to what we really want to measure because that's what gets done. Metrics come over that though. So those KPIs then build up toward the metrics. The metrics are what you have provided as a board for years as our guiding force of saying, this is when we know we've arrived. And the rubric then changes based on whether we met that metric or not. So the key performance indicators are really for us to look at at the local level, at the site level. Are we getting things done? And the metrics is the generalities of his Chandler Unified Governing Board's goals for us. Are they getting accomplished? And so the metrics, the bigger picture, and the KPIs are small key performance indicators on specific objectives. Does that make sense? Okay. Thank you, team.
So I think we'll wrap up here. We have a small break. If anybody wants to stretch their legs before we get going with our regular board meeting. Thank you.